Hey, gentlemen, did I miss it or is it still on?
Derek, we just started.
Perfect.
We had started at two o'clock, but I had to go home and uh get on the computer.
Yeah, now it's working, Alvin.
Yeah, I had to set it from the computer. It wouldn't let me do it from the iPad.
Oh.
Let me send Darren a text.
Who worries?
So Justin, you wanna go ahead and tell us what um if Darren jumps on, fine, I'll send him a text, but if not. So go ahead and tell me and Derek what we're looking at and what what kind of comments we have, you know, okay, cool.
Yeah, yeah, no worries. Appreciate it. Um, like I said, it's it's two major things that we've been trying to address over these last three submissions. Um, number one is the um water quality or basically storm water runoff, right? So you you drive around all these properties, you see detention ponds, retention ponds, some of them have water in them, some of them are just a big hole in the ground. So basically, I can't put any additional water onto adjacent properties faster than it's already flowing right now as a raw piece of property. So I'm sorry.
No, I didn't say anything.
Okay, um, so you know, right now, um, we've got to find some space on this property to do that detention area to hold that water. So what we had actually proposed and we had some discussions with them last time was this area in the middle. So this is really just all open park space for the most part. Um, we had suggested that we hold some water there and then we hold some water there. And what do I mean by hold water? Basically, it's about a one foot depression in the ground over course of about fifty feet between these two buildings. So it doesn't drop that much, but in a hundred year flood, it would fill fill up with water, right? Um, they also wanted to see, well, we don't want just a but big green space out there that's just being mowed. What are you actually using that for? So I said, well, we can use that for a dog park. Um, so what we've done on this last submission, we labeled this area as a dog park in there. We can put some fencing around it. You can take your dogs off leash. Um, that that goes to their, they really wanna see properties and green spaces being what they call amenitized. They actually have a function and a purpose other than just open, you know, land area. So we addressed that. We put that in the comments. Um, they didn't like that. Um, they don't like that, you know, the fact that it's a low lying area with detention potentially, and again, it's a hundred year flood. Uh, and then it being a dog park there. So that was one comment that they kicked back on us. Um, and then again, these two areas right here, we were gonna utilize for holding that water. Um, they didn't care much for that, so we've got a better solution for that, but a-again, it's gonna be more costly. That's my biggest problem. Instead of just open green spaces, that's one area that they kicked back on these comments that we're having to address. The second thing is probably the most major thing is a street. Um, so right now, we've got two major streets. We've got this road that's coming in off South Mitchell, and then we've got this pass through here that's coming off of River Birch Drive. In our last comments, they said, well, there's a major development coming to the west of your property over here. That's a multi-use development that's got big time commercial on the highway, then it steps down to apartments in the middle and then to the townhomes that would be adjacent to the west is the potential development that's coming. They said, we want connectivity to that. Okay, um, fine. I had to rework and redesign a lot of this area on the site itself, but I was able to accommodate that. And so this road that comes off of River Birch, we've got our intersection there. It makes this hard turn and it comes down the backside of the, or basically the south side of this property here, and then it would connect to that property to the west. You could also utilize this road to connect to any future developments that may be happening on the south side. So um, that's what was our proposed to put in there for that connection to the west. They kicked it back. They don't like that. They don't want it to be right there. And they said, we all use the development to the west has got a potential road that, you know, we've sketched out. I said, it's a, it's a concept. It's literally a hand drawing that they have sketched out. Um, so what magical number am I looking for? Is it a hundred feet? Is it a thousand feet? Where does it connect? So they finally sent me over. If I can pull it up here, apologize. I've got many things open. They finally sent me over this proposed development they keep talking about, and again, you can see it it's a hand sketch for the most part, right? Um, this is two eighty seven right here. This all in red is the proposed commercial that they're talking about. Um, all of this center section is all multifamily that they're talking about. And then they're thinking that this is gonna step down to a higher, a little bit lower density than multifamily being townhomes, garden homes, um, that type of facility. Our property is this L shape right here. And you can see this again, hand sketched road that they've got proposed in there, and that's where they want us to try and connect. And to me, it looks like it's trying to connect all the way through, even though this road right here, um, I don't know how familiar you are with this development back to the east of you. It's a, it's a seniors living, uh, La Dara. It's a senior living facility. It's all gated. There's a gate right here. And Fire Marshal and city engineers have told me this road is gonna be abandoned, and it's not, that was just for temporary access during construction. So there's not a reason that we have to connect to that all the way through, but that's, it seems, that's what it seems like they're looking for on this connection here. If I go back to our previously submitted plan, this road comes in off of South Mitchell. It works really well because it really splits and it kinda creates a little bit of a boulevard between um, units on each side of it. And it dead ends into a large park area, which works really well. Just from a view standpoint, it looks really nice. If we continued that road all the way through to that hand sketched connection that they're looking for, that's gonna be an issue. And the reason being, I'm gonna draw some lines here. If I connect that road all the way through here, this leftover property on the south side here, it 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 doesn't function for anything. Um, basically, I can take these types of units and stack them in there, but I'm losing, I'm gonna lose about ten units to be able to do that, which I don't think that's the plan we're trying to go for here. Um, so I have actually today um, submitted a suggestion back to the city engineers that I'm gonna kinda show you a little bit of taking this area because they had a big issue with, you know, this green space. What is its function? What is it doing? Uh, we have enough green space to meet our percentages on the property. So I I'm taking that road and I'm gonna eliminate uh, this green space and put that fifty foot right away through here to create that connectivity back towards the west. It still leaves us um, with this large park area here and then some space on the north side of the property to do some detention area. The problem there is, again, the comments of they don't want, you know, detention area to be a low lying area and just be an open green space. They want it to actually function as something. You know, we've drawn a soccer field or soccer pitch in here just to give them a relationship of how big that that park area is to help have practices or just pickup games, whatever you wanted to do with it. Um, that's just more of a relationship to show them that. The big thing, again, if we're gonna have to make that a one to one and a half foot swale in there, I don't think they're gonna like that. So I'm proposing that we go underground detention storage underneath this grass area and then have it outfall back towards the north where it connects with the city sanitary or city uh, stormwater sewer system. The underground storage, it 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 sounds expensive. Um, it it is, go ahead.
No, I've seen that before.
Yeah, um, the reality, the reality of it is on this site, we're not having to do a whole lot. We have to uh, retain point three acre feet, point three eight, believe, uh, yeah, point three required volumes, point three eight acre feet. Um, that's roughly about a hundred and twenty five thousand gallons of storm water that we would have to retain on site. Um, it's, it's not a tremendous amount. So if we actually look at this site, we can hold all of that retention underneath this soccer park, open park, green space, whatever it may be. So I'm proposing that back to the city engineers as well, uh, along with this right of way that we've relocated here. It shifts all these units down just a little bit more, uh, which actually as of right now, I can pick up four more units than what this plant plan was uh, provided. So it's helping out a little bit in that area, uh, but that's just the nature of, you know, eliminating this larger green space that's right here. Um, the other thing with the amenities, the dog parks, they wanna see different functions on the property. Uh, we have relocated the dog park to be up in this grass area to the north. Um, that's a lot of large open space. There's a right of way that's gonna have to be dedicated towards River Birch. So we're left with some open space up there, which we can amenitize that by having a smaller dog park in that area. So a-again, I'm 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 on my fifteenth million revision here of trying to figure out exactly what the heck that they want. Um, I will say that the good thing is, is I've sent this back over to the Director of Engineering and I'm dealing directly with him. Uh, in the past, it has, you know, I've tried to reach out to the city engineers that review these documents and um, you know, they'd say, well, we can't really give you anything. We have to submit it formally. So I'm kinda been shooting in the dark like with this road down here. Okay, I gave you a road. You know, I asked them before, where do you want us this connection to be? They said, well, it's just gotta go back to the west. Okay, so I gave them a road. It goes back towards the west and they didn't like it. So that, I mean, that's, those are some of the things that I'm dealing with here. Um, I'm gonna pull up these comments that were sent to us on August fourth. Um, just so you can kinda see what we're looking at here. So yeah, these are, I think, more so just general comments. Uh, we've got the case numbers on the exhibits. Um, the one thing we didn't have, I think, was our landscape plan was not labeled as exhibit D. Um, that's, that's, that's a minor thing. It's just a text we gotta put on the plans. Uh, everything else was labeled uh, already. There's a comment down here I wanna show you. Um, I thought we had addressed the total number of units, um, because it's the total number of lots. It's the same thing, but I guess they wanna see the difference in the lots versus the units. But tha- that's semantics that we can take care of. Um, there's a couple of areas where we had sidewalks that were right on the street. Um, they didn't like that. They want to pull those sidewalks back off of the street four feet. Again, that that's, that's minor things that we can take care of um, between comments and submittal time. Um, the difficulty in reading the labels, I'll just try to clarify that for them and figure out how to make that read a little bit better for them. The exhibit C, so the exhibit C is all the exterior renderings that um, we have done on the buildings, and I think I've sent those to you guys a couple times. We've even modified them just a little bit here and there. Um, so what they, what they're saying here is on May eighteenth, provided an email with different styles of townhomes that we're seeing city council lean towards. Um, that's a little bit of a false statement from them. I mean, you know, I've, I've set through all of the uh, townhome projects that have come through recently and I'm gonna pull up one of them that was recently approved and is under construction right now. Um, this is at the corner of Walnut Creek and Debbie Lane. It's called Parkside Town Homes. Uh, they have a small commercial um, tract on the, on the north side, but all of these areas are all the townhomes that are in there and
It sure is condensed.
Yeah, yeah, there, theirs is very, very condensed. Um, they have, this plan is the quickest one I could find from my old files. They have modified it a little bit and taken out a few of the units to create a large green space through the development, basically straight down the middle here. Um, and then they widened, I believe, one area in here to in this street. No, it's in this street right here to have this east-west connection with the larger green space as well. But other than that, I think they still are able to attain most of these units that are here. Um, these were the um, plans that were submitted for those townhomes and the exteriors that they were potentially looking at. They're a little bit more colonial style um, than what we're proposing, which is a little bit more modern and contemporary, got a little bit of a Dutch flair to it. Um, you know, this is what has passed in recent times. I go back to their comment here of uh, different styles of townhome units that we're seeing city council lean towards. Um, there's another project that recently passed that's over there right behind the field house uh, off of Broad Street and two eighty seven that it, you couldn't tell if they were apartments or townhomes because they do sit right next to a new apartment complex. So as far as design style goes, um, you know, what they're saying here, we understand that these elevations that you all want to move forward with, I just wanna be sure that it's understood that the elevation direction will need to be explained by the applicant during public hearings if those items are brought up. I don't see that being an issue. Um, there's some other townhomes that have just been proved right here off of um, First Avenue here in downtown, right behind my office. And um, they are very contemporary. In fact, there's about a hundred lineal feet of just flat walls going across there. What we've proposed has a little bit more undulation on those front elevations, you know, dips and dives that really make it pronounced for different areas. For instance, the front door stoops, they're recessed back into the building itself so that can provide a little bit of an awning and a cover there. So I don't, I don't, this comment here is, to me, is not valid. It's I I feel like there's some specific style of architecture that the planning staff wants to see. Um, but they really can't dictate that, so. Um, they wanna see elevations of the garages. I've, I've shown that to them that was in that plan, but I guess I'm gonna have to take a big highlighter and and highlight it for them and address that. Excuse me.
Listen.
Um, exhibit D is a landscape plan and exhibit E is our written documentation for the PD documents. Um, there's just some minor comments on on those as well. I didn't pull those up here, but um, just more clerical things on our end. Um, I have one paragraph in there refers to three different tracts of land, but we're only having one tract of land here, so. Um, again, I, those are easy things that could have been addressed um, prior to going to a planning and zoning meeting. Um, GIS, that's never really an issue. It's just coordination of coordinates. That's, that's fine. Landscape administrator had some comments here. He wants to see some additional shrubs. Um, and again, Caleb Tandy is a newer landscape administrator, not the one we've been dealing with previously. So that's a little bit difference of opinion sometimes when you get different people in here. Um, that's fine. We can put some shrubs in along the buildings on the private access drives. He wants to provide trees along the private access drives. That doesn't make sense. Um, you're talking about in these alleyways, that's what we're considering private access drives? Putting trees, there's no room to put trees down there. Um, I I gotta fight back on that because that would just not work very well. Those trees wouldn't get very big. And then again, I go back to, you know, one of the most recent plans that was submitted. Um, every townhome project that's been submitted recently. This is their landscape plan. All of these drives, which are private access drives, no, no trees are shown. We have all the trees shown on the street side drives in the front yards. So again, it's just their comments that they're pulling up here that just don't make sense to me. I don't know where they're getting that information from. There's no requirement for it. Um, the last section here is engineering. Um, again, we've talked about some of these, but uh, the dog park must not be in a drainage easement. We've previously put that drainage easement with that little one foot swale and the dog park in it. They don't like that. Um, paving width of the fifty foot right away, street is twenty nine feet back of curb, back of curb. Um, I I guess they couldn't measure that to be exactly twenty nine feet. Um, I'll, I'll put a dimension on there and prove that to them. Uh, driveways along southern portion of fifty foot right away do not comply um, with spacing requirements. So the driveways must be alley served. What they're saying there, again, it goes back to just trying to lay out this whole site. This is that road that we propose, a fifty foot right away back towards the west. They will not allow any of these units on the alleyways to be served off of that road. All of those roads must be on the sides where there's no direct access into a driveway. Um, and so that's, again, that's been the really tricky part is to try and create these roads without having direct access to these uh, units off of them.
Well, your other plan takes that away because that road goes away if they approve it.
That's correct. That, that, my other plan that I'm proposing here, this now becomes just a strict alley on the south side, and we have direct access off the alley. This right of way here that we're adding back in there, all of these are street front. It's basically this, this unit that's here and this unit that's here, I turned them ninety degrees to be street running. And now you've got alley access and alley access to each one of those.
Yeah.
Um, they want us to clarify which sidewalks are public. I mean, they're all public uh, at the end of the day, it's not a gated community. So we'll try to clarify that as as better as we can. Um, I think engineering wise, they're um, pull it up, engineering wise, there's, you know, on these corners here, we have to give visibility, we'll call visible, visibility clips. We have to show a triangle there where nothing is improved in there that's on a vertical standpoint. Um, they did not show those on there. I will say that that's probably a gaffe on our end that uh, we can address really quickly um, with putting those back in. And then forty foot radiuses for eyebrow curves. I looked through that and I felt like we had those everywhere. I think the only area we didn't was in this section here. I'm sorry, in this section here. Um, so we just had to flatten that out just a little bit more, which could have been easily adjusted as well. Seven by sixty foot visibility triangles along right of ways. Um, and then again, this comment, proposed public street connection to the west property proposed on the south side of the development is not in a location that will serve the west property. Um, I I tend to disagree with them. Um, see if I can find that plan. And again, this, this proposed Lone Star development that they're calling it here is just a concept, but if we were to zoom in, I'm sorry. We were to zoom in, you know, I proposed that right away development right here. It aligned right with that road. It didn't take this big weird S curve in there. We were to zoom in, you know, I proposed that right away development right here. It aligned right with that road. It didn't take this big weird S curve in there. Um, we could make magic happen anywhere we needed to. This is, this is in. Very conceptual development standpoint. We've redesigned this property fifteen times to try and actually get, you know, um, clearances on it, so. We're much further along than they are. Um, I feel like they should.
Make, yeah, yeah, they should be the ones accommodating.
Right. But they're, they're kicking it back and telling us differently that we need to accommodate something that's just make believe right now.
Well, Justin, I've done a lot here. Um, I got another call in six minutes, but from where we are today, you've, you're dealing with the, the director now. You think you've got some better communication and. So um, so there's a possibility that he can answer some questions for you and we can get this submitted by the next time.
Yes, sir. Um, like I said, I'm dealing with Director of Engineering now. Um, just, I've, I've known him for years. Um. He's not been the director very long, I think about six months, but um. He and I, I think, are on the same page just by conversation wise. Um, but I wanted to send, I've sent this plan back over to him, our proposed revisions. Um, to really get it back in writing from him that, yes, that this will work. Um, because I can't keep redesigning this. This. It cost me twenty five thousand dollars in engineering fees and everything else every time I redesign this thing, so. Um. I I know you don't have any more time. It's costing you money. I don't have any more money or time available on this either. Um, but we're gonna get across the goal line. It's just a matter of trying to get that direct line of communication established with them to. Try and hit that bullseye um, instead of just playing blindly for the most part.
Okay.
So like I said, all this has been, information has been sent over to uh, Engineering Department. Do you get their blessings on what we're anticipating doing? And then we have to revise our drawings. Um, I think that I should hear back from him by Friday or by Monday at the latest. Um, but as soon as I do, then we'll, we'll jump on this to try and get our engineering documents updated to accom- to accommodate this. Uh, some of the things, just as far as like underground detention, um, that's actually a little bit easier to allocate that cuz we don't have to. We don't have to tell them right now the exact slopes or the grades. It's all underground. Um. And that's just an easy label for us to be able to do and we don't have a whole lot more engineering that we have to do to, you know, come in here and figure out the volume. You know, the volume that a, a slope grading area like this would hold. So I think that it's gonna be a little bit quicker for us to turn this up around if we can go with the plan that we're proposing. But again, I don't wanna do a whole lot more until I get that blessing from the Engineering Director. Um. I was gonna give him today and then call him from Monday morning to say, hey, did you see it? What do you think? Can we move forward?
Well, man, I tell you, um, I appreciate you doing this with us, showing us all the stuff that you've done. Uh, you answered all my questions. I don't know if Darren and Derek have any, but I'm very satisfied with what you've shown us, so I really appreciate you and uh. Just know we're gonna get this thing done next, next month, this month.
That's right. Um, like I said, I need to as well, gentlemen. I'm not, I'm not just BSing you here. Um.
We see it. We see it. I mean, I see the notes. I see the work. I see all the changes, man. Thank you so much for staying on this for us and uh. We'll be proud of it in a minute.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Justin, thanks. I'm gonna jump off and get ready for my three o'clock and uh, I'll see y'all soon, okay?
Right. Thank you all.
Thank you, buddy. Bye bye.
Thanks, Justin.
All right. Thanks, gentlemen. Talk to you soon.